Welcome to the January 3, 2017, joint work session with the Falls Church City Council and the Falls Church School Board. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening. Mr. Castillo, do you have anything you wanted to say before we get started?
Just Happy New Year. I look forward to working with you all and getting a project underway so that we can get something moving in 2017.
All right, sounds good. Mr. Shields, do you want to take over and introduce the topic today?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and Happy New Year, everybody. Dr. Schiller may want to join in with just a few introductory comments as well. But tonight is really an update by the working group for the full boards so that you're aware of the discussions that we're having related to the questions that are on the roadmap, specifically relating to options on the school program. And so that's kind of the headline for today's briefing. We will start, though, with just an overview of what we do have in the notebooks, the state of play of the data that we have in response to the questions that the Council and School Board jointly put together. And so that's our goal today, and we don't expect decisions tonight. We do want this to be a setup, however, for a meeting later in the month where we hopefully can make more progress on these options, answer all the questions related to them, and then set things up for decisions later on. So that's a quick introduction of what we hope to cover tonight. Dr. Schiller?
The working group had extensive meetings last week.
Microphone, please.
There you go.
The working group had extensive meetings last week, as did Wyatt and myself, and Bob Jones has been invaluable with the kind of support that he's provided for all the data. We appreciate Tim's work and Michael's work here, and we were prepping this afternoon as well. It looks like a lot of material in front of you, which it is, but I think the way that it's been structured here might fall into place as we walk through it, and it becomes then, I think, pretty evident in terms of why we've structured it. And thanks to Wyatt's innovative approach with color coding, it allowed us to be able to really see how these are maybe three options with derivatives off of each.
That's the goal. Yep.
Great. Good evening, all. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Come on, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Perfect. We have a lot of data to get through tonight. To kind of fast-forward to the end of the meeting, what we're hoping to do, what I'm hoping to do, is to come out of tonight with everyone saying, okay, we've still got a lot more work to do, but we've got everything we asked for in terms of the types of data that need to be collected, the model formats that we're going to need to work through over the next few meetings. My goal is to have us all come out of this room today saying, okay, we've got that. Now we need to make some decisions with it, but we're not lacking any glaring pieces of information or any models. If we can come out of tonight with that, excellent. If we can't, or no one's quite there yet, this would be an awesome meeting to tell us what else is lacking so that the work group can go back and make sure we've pulled that all together so that we can move forward. Does that make sense? We're going to go through some of these slides initially pretty quickly. We're going to go through the fact-finding that you've seen before, some discussion options, which was a nice terminology that said, we're not presenting, obviously, construction options tonight, we're presenting a discussion of various options to look at as we think about what types of models need to be milt out to give you the information you need, and then what the next steps will look like with your agreement. So first, you know that back in November, a work group came together, the format for a work group came together. I think we've met how many times now? Five times. The working groups met five times outside of the times we have met here. If you keep going, you know all of this, two city council members, two school board members, meetings are all public, and lots of work has gone on. These meetings are at a minimum two hours each, and many of them have lasted far beyond that. The roadmap that you've all seen before, we're still in that blue phase of trying to make sure we've got all the data collected, and we've got a process and a plan for analyzing it, the idea being that we keep moving through that pretty quickly. The first meeting that I presented to you guys at, what was that, two and a half months ago now, was all about enrollment data. Those were kind of the school board-level questions that came out of the discussions we had. Those are all in your binders. That information has continued to be updated. We're still waiting on one final set of numbers from Weldon Cooper. My understanding is that that's going to take about six weeks to produce that level of report. Is that about right, Wyatt?
That's our understanding.
That's our understanding. So what you should have in your books and on the screen is a really good understanding of where our enrollment numbers come from, where our capacity numbers are now by school, what housing projections are going to do to those numbers going forward, and that Weldon Cooper is doing a much deeper dive into all of this that will be publicly available in about a month and a half. So in a way that I'm not looking to rush, but also looking to not give you the same information we spent a couple of meetings talking about, that's kind of the status of where our enrollment numbers and our capacity numbers stands today. You've seen all of these, they're all in your book, enrollment projections, et cetera. You've seen all of these before, and nothing is new in here. So you've got all of those by high school, by building unit type, et cetera. If you go back to that last slide, the kind of takeaway that the working group talked about, that we talked about together, is that it's likely that anything that we build is going to need to accommodate at least 1,200 students in the coming years. Now, there's an upper limit that we can talk about and all that, but there was no models or projections that had a number smaller than that. So it seemed like if we're looking for those commonalities, there was no projection that had less than 1,200 students being what we'd need to be looking at. Okay, then we went through a look at what would it actually cost to fix a lot of what's in the building? And you saw the memos, et cetera. If you keep going, Tim, this is what it would cost to do the boiler and the roof and all that other stuff, how old everything is. You've got all of that information. Then we talked about what would it cost to renovate what was in there, et cetera, and we went through a lot of that data at our last meeting as well. Anything on this one you want to hit?
No, I would just add that we ended with question nine, and the material that you've been handed for tonight, we'll pick back up at question 10. But before we get there, I'd like to just quickly run through the following session we had, which was our dive into the city council fact-finding, the focus of which on that December 3 meeting was the question of affordability, and Wyatt walked us through a very in-depth presentation, which you all still have in your binders, but it became a question of factually what is affordable based on our debt-to-assess value, how we calculate debt, our payout ratios, and an opinion on what is reasonable. And part of that was looking at neighboring jurisdictions, similar jurisdictions in Northern Virginia, and trying to get a snapshot of where the current debt service is and what the possibilities could be moving forward with this project. This was the annual debt service schedule as it currently stands. Wyatt talked through two different scenarios. One was based on a 12% policy limit, the current policies as they stand, and the other was a creative look at how we could accomplish the entire CIP as it currently stands up through fiscal year 2022. So this chart shows some of the differences and some of the assumptions that were made to get there, and we walked through what that looks like. This chart showed us how we could do the debt policy as it stands for 70 million at 20 years, and then this was the full CIP at a 30-year term. The point of this presentation I know Wyatt made was to show that at a barbell approach at both ends of the spectrum, there are creative options we can use, and the funding for this project is possible depending on how we choose to approach it and which option we move forward. Any additional financial modeling would take a bit more specification on the model that we wanted to pursue. With that, it brought us to the discussion options that you have before you tonight, and I know we walked through that quickly. Did anyone have any outstanding questions before we get into the material for tonight? Awesome.
So what you have in front of you today is a large spreadsheet, and Tim will put it up here. We looked at, it's way too small to read up on the screen. It might be too small to read in the paper you have, but it should give you a pretty good understanding of the level of work. It was extremely clear to all of us that when the working group was constituted, it was a group to collect data and look at data and wrestle with data and then bring that back to the full group. The working group is not a policy group. The working group is not a decision-making group. It's a group to wrestle with lots of complicated stuff and bring it back to the full group for discussion. This spreadsheet started with two or three very nice and neat and easy-to-explain columns on it, and it has grown to what you have in front of you, which has about 10 different options, sub-options of each other in there. This is an attempt to show various scenarios. The caution I will make to this, and then we'll start walking through this in greater detail, is no one should look at this chart and say, oh, I really like row number six. That's what we should do at this number with these number of assumptions built into it. This is the best series of estimates that can be come up with with the data that's currently available, and the working group and Arcadis and others doing really quick and efficient and deep work with the information we have now. The goal would be, as we move forward, to get a sense of where this board is on either end or middle of the spectrum so that a lot more additional work could be done to refine these. For the time that we've had and the amount of work that has gone into it, there's actually a pretty incredible amount of detail in this spreadsheet, and we want to start walking through that tonight.
Moving back one slide, the question that we looked at for the school board for question 10 was, what could the school system accomplish at certain funding tiers? Now, in the questions that were originally drafted, those were number values. It was looking at 20, 40, 60, 80, 100, 120 million. What we found as we were putting it together was that the tiers were better categorized in what they accomplished, and we came up with three of them. The first is to defer construction. The second is to do some combination of renovation on the existing footprint plus new construction to accommodate capacity needs. And then the third was new construction altogether. Within each tier, as you saw, there are options based on the information that has already been shared plus guidance from Arcadis. So when you look at it by color coding, you'll see on the left, there's defer construction. The green in the middle is renovation and new construction, and then the purple is new construction. Within each one, you'll see options. It looks like there are many. There's really about five. They are kind of fixing critical issues and adding trailers. They are doing phased additions. They're doing some combination of renovation plus addition. There's the option four, which is kind of half demolition plus some version of renovation. And then option five by itself is building a brand-new school. So as we break some of these down, and we'll take some time to walk through the chart, the first option in the first tier is deferred construction, and really what that means is deferring any additional construction needed to address capacity concerns. It's kind of saying, we're not exactly sure what we need to do, so in the meantime, we're going to spend the money we need to to address urgent structural needs and any longer-term maintenance that comes up, and in the meantime, we're going to install trailers over the next 15 years as needed and as our capacity grows. That's the kind of first and most basic option. Moving into the second tier...
Does that assume that existing common facilities such as lunchrooms, auditoriums are adequate for that increased growth, or will there be a need to expand that as well?
This was the option that said, we're not sure if we're going to be able to put that motion forward, so we're only going to look at trailers. It's kind of the, for lack of a better term, the do-nothing option. It's the bare minimum that we could do and still function.
So it does assume that all those other facilities will have to continue as is?
That we will find ways to make do with them.
All right.
That's a good question. Moving into the renovation options, the second tier is options that anticipate renovating the existing footprint and constructing an addition that will accommodate long-term capacity needs. Within this tier, we have, like I said, two, we have three different options. Option two, the phased additions, three, renovation and addition, and four, a half-demolition and renovation. When you break them down and talk a little bit more about what that means, option two of phased additions means making any critical repairs now to the existing building and adding 200,000 square feet in phases over a 12-year period. The phased additions would increase the capacity to 1,200 students. They would include an addition to the middle school. They would include central office space, and they would include minimal commercial development longer term in 2029. This was the option that explored, could we add a little bit now, add a little bit more later, and kind of move the footprint a little that way? Yeah.
You're not getting there yet, but the cost of that, somewhere here, is spread out also over those 12 years?
Yes, it is.
So there's a $43 million cost, a $10 million cost, and then a $58 million cost. Because it's a phased addition, it's also a phased expense.
Absolutely. And one of the things that we want to talk about moving forward as feedback from this meeting is taken back to the working group is how we might consider looping in some of the financial pieces of this in more detail than what's on the paper, but that's an excellent point also.
Let me ask, if I could, another question. What is the end result of that option? In other words, what is the facility you have at the end of the period of time? In other words, is it essentially a brand-new facility built over a period of years, or do you have portions that are from, you know, 50 years ago that have basically got a new coat of paint and other portions that are brand-new?
There are portions that are brand-new and about 100,000 square feet of the existing footprint. Bob, I don't know if you have anything you want to say on that?
Yeah, the idea was that with the first project, you would design your new school. So then you would first, you would build the first piece of that school in, I think it was by 2021. The 2025 project was the MEH expansion, and then the one that you need by 2029 would be another 120,000 square feet to the new building and then taking down half of the old building. So beyond 2029, the end goal would be to finally replace the last piece at some future point and take down the entire existing school, somewhere beyond 2029.
So in 12 years, you would have essentially a new school?
No, you would have, yeah, by 2029, you would have a 200,000-square-foot new building and 100,000 square feet of the existing building left.
Okay. And what portion was planned to be, the kind of remaining portion? Had that been figured out yet?
No, it hasn't gone. The idea was that you would take down the part nearest, closest to Hancock and try by 2029 to at least free up some land for development.
And at the end of 2029, what portion would be, approximately how much was contemplated to be available for commercial development?
Four acres.
Just four?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Sorry, just one follow-up. Why so little acreage?
Because we still have half of the existing school remaining. So somewhere beyond 2029, if you build the third phase of the new high school, then you could tear down the rest of the building and have the rest of the acreage for development.
And so this total price, does that include that third phase?
No.
It does not? So you're basically at, is it 111 million without doing the third phase?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
But, and just another follow-up. So we don't have apples-to-apples about total cost at this point that provides something that gives the ultimate cost?
Well, I guess the comparison would be to one of the half-demolition addition scenarios. But those are doing the whole project at once, where this one was an exercise to see how we could space the projects out, you know, to help with the funding.
And is there adequate capturing of what that cost differential is of the out-year money?
Yes. The escalation, yes.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
As you look at this one, if you look at option two here, Justin, all of them are giving us the same result, a 1,200-student high school. Oh, that one's 1,200, thanks. Forget that. I'm wrong. They're not all giving us the same result.
So what I'd love to do, if we can, is continue walking through these, and then we can get into a little more discussion about some of the implications or some of the comparisons between them. Like Michael said when we started, I think any of these moving forward would require an extensive feasibility study and further number gathering to make sure that they work, but these are kind of the options as they stand.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Why is this 1,200 instead of 1,500?
Yeah, three of the examples have 1,200. The rest of them are billed to 1,500. And so the 1,200 ones are all assumed to be phased, and maybe let Bob speak to that in just a little bit more detail.
Yeah, option two, I was just building up to what we thought we would need for 1,200.
But I thought you said this was a total of 300,000 square feet, which is the same as the range of option three and option five, so I don't understand why it's 1,200 instead of 1,500. Sorry.
That's a good question.
That is a good point. Let me double-check on that. I was thinking, I was trying to just go to 1,200, maybe I threw too many square feet in there, so the price would come down a little bit on that. And then the only other one at 1,200 would be option 5A, and that's because, you know, we're waiting on, yeah, in the shell, because we're not building out the full 300,000 square feet.
Perfect.
And then the maximum capacity is not at current program. That's the first, it's, you know, current program is 1,200, is that right, for all of these? With 1,500 being changes in program, is that right?
Right. It's built to 1,200, but with the program changes, it can house 1,500.
And Bob, I know some of our discussion about option two and those numbers came from the shared space versus classroom space and the effect that has on some of the numbers, but we can pull an answer for that one. I'd like to continue walking through these if we can. Discussion option three, you'll see, is renovating plus an addition. It explores the cost to renovate 200,000 square feet, the existing footprint, and add 103,898 square feet is the addition. This has two subsets, 3A and 3B, to explore a minimal option, a more extensive renovation, and then a total gut renovation. For all of them, for option three, you'll get increased capacity to 1,500 students in addition to the middle school, a five-to-six-year timeline, looking at a 2022, 23 completion, and long-term central office space without the potential for commercial development. So these options fed into the questions of, if we just keep the footprint that we have and do an addition, what will we get? And you'll notice that this option compared to two does not have any potential for economic development, even a limited amount of acreage. Option four, if you move on into the slightly darker green, is the half-demolition and renovation. And this differs from the third option, is a more aggressive blend of renovation plus new construction. By doing a half-demolition of the facility, it does allow for that future economic development potential. There's one subset, option 4A, that looks at how we compare total renovation, total gut renovation to a lesser extensive renovation. This one kind of flips the numbers, so instead of renovating 200,000 square feet, we're only renovating 100,000. We're building that 203,898, and we're increasing capacity to 1,500 students still. This still includes the addition to the middle school. It's still a five- or six-year timeline, and it also includes the long-term central office space.
And what's the rationale for a half-demolition? What's the thinking there? If you demolish halfway, why wouldn't you go all the way?
So the thinking behind it was directly from the questions that we got about exploring options that would kind of accomplish half of what a full construction build would be. So the goal for this would be to accomplish the addition for capacity, to renovate a part of the footprint, but to demolish it, because compared to the option three that we just looked at, it's that half-demolition that gives you the potential for economic development. It's just part of the spectrum of options.
Yeah, I think it was intended to be a blend of reduced costs for renovation versus the commercial development. And is there just something in the middle where you might save a little by doing some renovation, but also free up some space for commercial development? So it's just exploring that middle ground.
Right. And from a process standpoint, this is an attempt at kind of finding a way for us to get beyond the what-if scenarios. Okay, we've seen three options, but what if you only did half the building? What if you did nothing? What if you did? And so every time another what-if came out of the discussions, we tried to model it to make sure people could see that there are lots of different ways we could do this, not recommending doing it a certain way. This is what it would look like. Now we have a better sense of, from a range, what do those ranges look like?
I just had a question. On option two, you show the breakdown of cost over time, so you're showing it over a series of years. Is the assumption that for all other options, we would need to fund the full amount immediately?
Yes. And again, not to get too far ahead, but once we finish walking through, you'll see there were other attachments in your packet, and those are cost breakdowns that kind of better reflect where some of these numbers are coming from. So you have all of that information, even though it's not up on the slides, assuming that when you leave here, you'll want to digest it and really think more about where those numbers are coming from. The final option, discussion option five, is the one we've talked about for a new school. Option five examines the possibility of what a school could be completely off of the existing footprint. It has two subsets, which came out of previous discussion, that compare what the cost would be for doing all construction at once for a 1,500-student project, or building for 1,200 with the anticipation of a potential future addition, or building to 1,200 with a shell already built in for future expansion. So that's where you'll see some of the nuances in those. Option five also includes an addition for the middle school. It's on a four-year timeline for completion in 2021. It includes long-term central office space, and option five, as you may have guessed, includes the maximum potential for economic development. All of that said, understanding that everyone has questions here, before we move forward, now is the time. What other questions do you have on how these came together? Yes.
So less of a question and more just, I guess, commentary as a member of the working group. So I know that everyone's minds are probably reeling a bit and staring at 10 options. Just a couple of quick notes. I think this is the first time that, as a body, or two bodies, we've actually looked at a comprehensive set of options. I think the ones we had seen in the past is what's now called option five, new school. So 112 million, which is now actually 117 million with the increase in costs. And I think last year, the two bodies briefly looked at the gut renovation addition option, which is 3B. I think it used to be 88 million, but when we were trying to compare apples to apples, we actually had to add some things back in, like MEH. So I wanted to make sure people had that context, that this is the first time we actually looked at this full spectrum. And then to anchor yourselves on the previous numbers, we looked at the 88 was the 3B, and the 112 is now option five for 117. And I guess the other thing to note is, I think we had talked about, what could we afford? So as we look at all these options, other than doing nothing, there's nothing here that is below that 40 million of, you know, what we actually have in terms of, that we can afford to stay below our debt capacity. So I think that's something I want people to understand as a takeaway, based on the way we've scoped out the options as it stands.
If I could just add, though, that option two is 43 million immediately, which is very close to our debt capacity, and then as debt starts coming offline in the future, the next phases become affordable because they're within our debt capacity, because we have debt coming offline. So I would say that option two is close to what we can, under current policies, afford. Yes.
Other questions?
Does option two take into account the need for relocatable capacity, given that George Mason will hit capacity at about 2018? Is that built into those numbers?
I believe it is. I could check the numbers on the chart. Bob, do you remember?
Yeah, we did have cost in there for a year or two of temporary trailers to take up the slack until that first addition is complete in 2021.
And in terms of the phasing, what gets built first?
The addition.
So is that classroom capacity?
Right. Well, I'm assuming...
Cafeteria, I mean, Mustang Cafe is pretty much firewalled now, so what do we do for food? Are people going to be having lunch at 9:00 in the morning? Or how does that, how do those program aspects play out?
That, if we decide on a few options that want to be explored more, and then you can get into more of a feasibility study and actually get into what the spaces are, which spaces would be retained in the existing school, and which ones make the most sense to put in the addition, but an exercise to that level of detail hasn't been made.
That include keeping the building, the existing building in the way it is with repairs to, let's say, the ceiling and the floors?
Yeah. The first phase included $8 million to put a new roof on and replace the HVAC equipment. And then I think it was $500,000 a year budgeted for general repairs, but that was just to keep the existing school functioning.
Okay, so it would just pretty much remain the same way it looks now, but repaired?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay, Mr. Z, and then Vice Mayor Conlon.
Thank you. Can you characterize again for me the difference among the three option fives you have?
Okay, then, so option five is the complete... Okay, then, so option five is the, the complete new school. Option 5A is to build enough of the school to reach 1,200 students and have it planned for a future addition. And 5B is you, you build all the space for the, the entire new school, but you finish enough of the school for the 1,200, and you leave that other section as a shell until it's needed.
Okay, so without diving into the weeds too deeply, but I just want to, a comparison here, that in 5A, it looks like you're able to finish off the space for central office at roughly $254 a square foot. And to 5B, you're saying that the, the shell that doesn't get, well, what don't you put in? I guess HVAC and walls and-
Yeah, basically-
--electrical and stuff like that. You just have floors and, and, and the fenestration and roof. And that's cost at 171 dollars a square foot? Just using your numbers.
As far as the-
Shell.
The shell space. Yeah, it's basically, you still have to sprinkle it-
They told me that the difference between the shell and the buildout would be 60 dollars a square foot.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and take a look.
Well, just the math is evident from what you've presented us tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. I'll have more questions later, thank you.
All right. What I'd like to point out about this, and I don't want to be the one telling you not to get two in the weeds, that we all have to get in the weeds, we need to get a lot more in the weeds, but not in 10 options. You need to hire some consultants and cost estimators and a whole bunch of other people to get numbers that you can confidently start voting on, but it doesn't make sense to do that with 10 options if you, as a group, think five of them don't even make sense. So part of what we need to do from a process standpoint is start getting some consensus, maybe not tonight, but as we come back together, that option one doesn't make sense, if you think that. Let's take that off the table. Option two does make sense, doesn't make sense. We need to start getting some clarity from this body, or else it's going to get wildly expensive to get to the level of detail that can be justified in terms of making your decisions moving forward. Does that make sense?
Just, just a question. So, so are you saying that we will proceed and provide cost estimates, and will we do a design and then seek bids? And if so, are we planning to borrow? Or where do we have the 10 or 11 million dollars that that will cost?
So there's-
Or will we do a PPEA and not have to bear those costs?
Right, there is a, there's actually a pretty significant number of different ways the development process could proceed from here. What seemed to be, again, from our perspective as an outsider, what seems to get in the way of this body moving forward is, is we can never get to a deeper level of analysis because everything needs to be explored at the same level of analysis. And so to do something really, really deep, it's going to take us narrowing down what some of these options are, and then we can get to that level of dialogue. So when I looked at this, again, from a complete outsider's perspective, you've got one option that's at 20 million, you've got a couple of options that are in the 65 to 75 million range, and then every other option's 100 million plus. And within that 100 million plus, there's a $14 million cost differential among all of the options. So from the cheapest 100 million dollar option to the most expensive, there's a $14 million cost differential as laid out. So if this body's more in the mindset that they're in the 65 to 75 million dollar range, let's explore that. If we're in the mindset that we're in the 100 million dollar range, then the options themselves, you get a lot of different options for not that much different money in the different options. But we need to start thinking through that before we get too deep on the next option.
Are you talking about the price or the cost? In other words, is development factored into this, or isn't it?
And I'll defer to the, the numbers guy.
Well, one, maybe I'll jump in on the, you know, the development piece is not part of the spreadsheet yet. We have not plugged in a way for you all to easily look at these options from a net cost after you factor in economic development. And so that's one area of work that we want to come back to you with at your next meeting. We have a couple of issues with that. We do, we have expertise on commercial real estate valuation earlier. We don't have one under contract right now. I think we can use some of the older information we have, and at least give some orders of magnitude numbers. If, if you need something more precise at this decision point, we need to, we need to get those services on board, which we don't have right now. The fiscal impact analysis, in terms of the tax yield, that also, I think we can do in-house with some basic modeling that we have right now, but if there's a desire for an independent view of it, we'd need to procure those, get those services lined up for us as well. But I think we can provide conceptual briefing on those options. What you see is that those 100 million dollar options, which free up the maximal land for economic development, can end up at buildout being the least expensive. And, you know, that's a remarkable thing, but that's been what we've been talking about really for two years, about the issue with that, which is that comes online after we're already on the hook for the debt, and so there's the higher level of risk for that option.
Yeah, and I think it's vital that we keep in mind, the net cost versus the price tag is a huge difference. And it seems to me, the threshold question in this exercise is, is economic development part of the package, or is it not?
That's right.
And everything flows from that. And so we can look at scenarios six ways to Sunday, unless we decide that, and until we do, we're just going to be going in circles.
I was going to follow up on that. To get what, what you're asking for, which I think is a very good question, you're saying we have in-house some of the expertise, we would need to do some of that modeling, but we'd need to procure the rest of it? Or do we have everything we would need in-house to give him that figure broken down that way? Not cost, but economic value?
We do not have the commercial valuation in-house. The fiscal impact modeling, we can do in-house.
So may I ask? So if I posed the question tonight, if we commit to developing seven acres at an FAR of 3.0, at the corner, starting at the corner of Haycock and Seven as Phase One, and then Phase Two would be whatever happens down the line at the Grad Center and with the Lamata contiguous land, you would be able to give me something on that, or we would need to procure additional consulting help to get a dollar figure for what that would throw off in terms of revenue?
What we could give you is a range that we think is credible, but it would be internally generated. You would not have an outside group that you could point to and say, these experts told us that this is the number, and we're going to rely on that. Instead, it would be more internally generated, and you would have to provide a range for it.
Okay, thank you, that's responsive, thanks. So that information could come to us internally within two weeks, or?
Yeah, my goal is to work through those scenarios internally to give you that sort of conceptual range, to help with this level of decision-making. To go further, we would need additional help.
Within a couple of weeks internally?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, if I could, go ahead, Ms. Oliver.
Poor Ms. Oliver languishing there.
Sorry, I thought, you know, you put your hand up if you wanted to speak, you didn't just blurt out, so. I, when I, when I look at these options and I think about affordability, for me, the critical thing is, what can we finance? Because any economic development, it's an important factor to consider, but on the question of affordability, it's what can we finance and what does financing cost us? So when I look at these options, I know that anything over 100 million is risky, and we are balancing that, in some cases in these scenarios, with a potential benefit from future economic development. So I would say that 3B, 4, 4A, 5A, and 5B don't make sense because the risk associated with spending more than 100 million dollars, we wouldn't want to do that unless we got the maximum economic development, and that's option fives. So I agree that option five, while very risky and not my favorite, is one that's worth continuing to look at. I believe that option two is, is important to look at because it is affordable in terms of the debt financing. The phasing on when we need to spend money is something that is financially sustainable and not as risky, which is not to say that it won't involve tax rate increases for our citizens, and it will bear cost. And we could do some additional looking at what we might, how we might be able to defray that cost. We could apply some of the same financial strategies that we used at 115 million for financing a lower figure to mitigate the cost on our taxpayers. So we need to, to take a look at that. So I think we need to take a bigger look at option five because it's kind of the really dream big option. I think we need to take a really good, hard look at option two because it is the most we can get under, without really pushing things. And whether people are interested in looking at 3 or 3A, something in between, they don't have any economic development where option two does include that possibility. So that's probably just a different way to look at it. But I don't think 5, 2, and maybe 3 or 3A is about all that I would want to look at. I would want to try to narrow it down to that. And, and so the questions that people are asking about economic development and the hopes that people have that economic development is somehow going to make this, if not free, because it's not going to make it free, but make it potentially affordable, you know, we need to come back to that. In terms of what we do in terms of economic development modeling, I think balanced against the cost of the school, we should, we can consider the sale or lease proceeds that we might get from the land. But I am reluctant myself to, to calculate as a part of the economic benefit, any ongoing tax revenue that comes from some future economic development, which is five or 10 or 15 years in the future. When we look at the city, we need more commercial development, but we need it just to operate the city. We can't use it also to finance the school. Maybe the sale or the lease of the land, yes, but that future economic benefit, it's just part of what we need. We need more commercial just to operate the city without putting an undue burden on our taxpayer. And so I don't want to calculate, I don't want to get into a lot of calculations about the benefit from that and trying to say it makes the school more affordable, because it just makes the city sustainable, and so we do all want to try to get something out of that.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, when you talk about the city in your remarks there, you mean net of the schools? Is that what you're saying?
No, I just mean the city operating budget.
As a whole?
As a whole.
The whole 70, 80 argument.
As a whole, puts a huge burden on our residential taxpayer when you compare it to some of our neighboring jurisdictions, which have a commercial real estate base, which is a significantly larger portion. So when we talk about needing that commercial development, we need it for the operations of the entire budget, city and schools. And so I don't, myself, want to factor that into that makes this, you know, this option more affordable. That's just my personal preference, because yes, we do need more commercial development, and it's a goal, but it's not going to make the school more affordable.
Thank you. So I have a question. I'm trying to figure out if, what the way I had been thinking about the problem, which column it's in, because it's not actually clear to me whether we're talking about option two, option three, or option 3A. So I'll say with the way I had been thinking about it, and then you tell me if, how this, or if this aligns in any way. What struck me, and this is just a personal prejudice unbacked by facts other than what I've seen in the past, is that the most affordable way to approach it was to build an MEH expansion and an addition that would get us through roughly 2026, with a renovation that would let the existing George Mason building continue to operate in that same timeframe. And then, once you got to 2026 and the George Mason, sorry, the Mary Ellen Henderson debt came off the books, you could make an independent decision to completely remove the existing George Mason building, further expand the new addition, opening up to 10 acres for commercial development, but you could make that independently. It would delay development, but it would put that on the table for a separate decision whether or not selling the land and having commercial development in the future made sense, and in the meantime, would have as small an expense as possible to get us through when our most significant item of debt came off the books, again, MEH in 2026. I think that is option three, which is sort of the minimal renovation, or it could be option 3A, but with the notion that you'd build the addition in such a way that you could have a new addition that would let you have an entirely separate project that's not on this list, that would let you replace the existing George Mason structure after 2026. But I, I'm not quite sure that's true. I have a second question, which is, I'm not sure why in option three or 3A, why all of the debt comes on the books from the very first moment as opposed to being somewhat phased, but that's sort of the question I've got.
Just one point on the debt. The debt, we would structure the debt in a, in a way that is most advantageous to the city and to push it, push every issuance out as late as we could. All of these options, though, mean full steam ahead, try to do everything in one project as quickly as possible. And, so I think that's what the, all those options are trying to represent.
Okay. So I'm not sure what the answer to my question is.
So, and that's just your, your last part of your question. So in terms of your big question, I'm going to turn that over to Bob. Or maybe to Bob Schiller, because you all worked on these. Option two in particular, I think you all tried to think through so it was, you know, at least conceptually feasible.
Yeah, I could go back and look at, starting with the MEH expansion and not starting with the, the high school building piece first. But I think when we were running the population numbers, we ran it, we were running it as, looking at both MEH and George Mason and the total needs for both schools combined. And I didn't, I didn't think just the one expansion would get us all the way to 2026, but I can take another look at that.
I'm not sure that's the question I was asking. What I'm trying to ask is whether or not it's, the, the George Mason expansion and the Mary Ellen Henderson expansion are done in a couple of pieces. If we looked at enough expansion for those two facilities in Phase One, so that would be perhaps the 200,000 square foot, sorry, the 100,000 square foot addition for Mary Ellen Henderson, sorry, for George Mason, and the addition for Mary Ellen Henderson, so that we got to our capacity needs with the minimal renovation to get us through 2026, are any of these options what Phase One of that would be? In other words, a expansion of George Mason's capacity to 1,200 or 1,500, whatever the appropriate number is, an expansion of MEH and a renovation of the existing George Mason footprint to make sure that it is operable at a minimal, at the minimal cost for that 10-year period?
That specifically hasn't been done, but that would just be a, a modification to option two. That's basically option two, starting with the, basically the high school addition or the high school building in option two has a connection to MEH, so that both facilities can use that extra space, and that took them to the 2025, at which point we put on the MEH expansion, which would last until 2029. And then that's why the, the next piece of the high school was completed in 2029, when you would need that capacity. And that's how we looked at option two.
So I don't understand then why the option two says the commercial development limitation is possibly four acres? Because I don't see why that couldn't be eight-
Oh, eventually it'll be the whole thing.
Okay.
But I didn't look out beyond 2029. I mean, I could do the, the third phase of the high- I mean, I could do the, the third phase of the high school and show what that looks like, but that would be beyond 2029.
Okay.
So I have a, I'm not sure if this goes to Wyatt or to Bob, but I'm looking at five A and option two. Five A is less money, you know, total, and I understand that option two is phased over several years. What kind of cost savings would we actually get by spreading it out over three years versus paying 107 million in one shot or 111 over 12 years? How much would we actually be saving by spreading it out like that, like for taxes? And, you know.
Yeah, option two, the, you're spending, you're going to spend more on the project, but you can finance it easier.
But does it actually save like tax dollars in the long run? I mean, we end up spending more money, so I don't understand how that computes that we're actually saving money with option two.
The way it works is, as Mr. Redinger pointed out, we have a big chunk of debt coming off our books in '22, and then again, the Mary Ellen Henderson debt comes off our books in 2025. So if you structure your construction program so that your big chunks of increased debt service line up when those, those old debt comes off your books.
Right, I understand that.
One of the big challenges you see in the graphs that were up just a moment ago is we have this big peak right, right at the beginning. That's where the big pressure is on the tax rate. Once you get into out years, the pressure abates.
Okay.
So the phased approach is more expensive in absolute sense, but could be more affordable because you stretch it out.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a way to possibly get around to that through any kind of clever financing? And I'm, you're the finance guy, not me, so, I mean, is there any way we can, you know, do option five A have the same effect as option two through some kind of alternate or creative financing?
Well, what we have looked at is using capital reserves to pay annual debt service. And so right now, we have 10 million in capital reserves. That's where you start. You can use that to shave the peak. The economic development scenarios, then take that strategy and make it exponentially more powerful by having payments for land in the out years. You use that to put into capital reserves and you shave the peak in even more. So that is the only way that those $100 million options are possible without a, you know, 15 to 20 cent increase in the tax rate.
But the, the total cost of the project, when you consider financing, could potentially be greater. We have not actually shown the true cost with financing. Remember that this 117 million dollar option assumes that we get the economic development.
I'm looking actually at five A.
Well, the hundred, anything over 100, assumes that you get some economic development to shave the peak in order to keep the tax rate affordable. But we've also, in order to do this, we've taken financing out to 30 years from 20 years, so we're going to be paying interest for a longer period of time. And we may be paying a higher interest rate, or we may need to build up unassigned fund balance for a portion of our time, which will have a cost to taxpayers as well. And, you know, there's a lot of other permutations in terms of what the cost, this is, he's only showing us the budget here and we're, you know, we, we do probably want to look at the total cost with all the financing costs. If you do level payment versus level principal, your interest costs are higher in the long run as well. So there are mechanisms that make it feel less painful, but actually increase the cost and we're not really capturing that. So we need to take a look at not only what the budget is, but what the total cost of the project is with financing. And then we want to take a look at, as we're able to finance it, what's it going to do to the tax rate over time? And anybody that thinks that it's not going to affect the tax rate at some point is fooling themselves.
I, I agree. I mean, that tax rate is definitely going to be affected. We need a new high school. I mean, it's been 15, this high school's like 15 years overdue. I think it was supposed to be replaced like at least 10 years ago. So we've had 10 years of no tax debt for the high school, so it's time. And we don't, we don't have a lot of time left. I mean, the high school is decrepit and, and we have to do something. And I, I can't, I mean, I'd love to sit here and like really delve into this and really get into the weeds, but I mean, we, we've got to move quicker and, and we've got to do something for these kids. We just do. And the kids not just there now, but the kids that are coming up. We, I don't want to see those children in a school that, you know, that's falling apart. I just don't. And, and, you know, we can talk about $3 million here, we can talk about 2 million there, but ultimately we want to make, get the best we can for our buck. And, I mean, when you're talking about a new school versus phased additions, which is super inconvenient for the students, if you're going to be doing construction over a period of years. As a parent, I, my kids are grown, my kids have graduated, so I don't have any dog in this sight. But I am, I am advocating for the kids who are going to be attending that school. And I will say that as a parent, I wouldn't want my kid going to school where there's constantly construction going on. A new addition, oh, that next year, there's a new addition, oh, there's going to be construction going on. I, I wouldn't want that. So I, I, when I look at option two, I said, I mean, it might look good, you know, on paper, but put yourself in the shoes of those parents and those children. Okay? Same.
Vice Mayor Conley. She did put me in.
All right. So as we looked at all these options, we came up with a lot of positives and negatives for each one. Some of what Mark Rich just described is one of the negatives for option two. And what Ms. Oliver just described is one of the positives for option two. So, and I think each one of these has something that's a positive and something that's a negative, and we need to be able to balance those things out as well. Another thing that's a positive for option two is that it allows us to fix the current problems at George Mason now with a plan to add on later. So that falls on the positive side, where we're not going to spend $8 million on the roof and HVAC and then knock the whole school down to build a brand new school. But there, so I think we really need to be able to look at the positives and negatives of each one that go beyond just what's on this chart. Because, yeah, if you look at option two, the first student who would be able to attend the brand new finished George Mason is currently in kindergarten. That's how long it would take. So I think that's a drawback. But we're a small city, and so I keep thinking about this like a Rubik's Cube, like you think you have, you're going to solve two sides and you have all but one piece, and then it all just falls out again. And you have to start over again and say, all right, how do we get these building blocks together so that each one falls into place so that we end up with the right cube? I almost bought my, brought my cube tonight to show you all that. So I think there's a lot of little pieces that have to fit together, so we can't focus on one side too much without looking at the other. But that being said, I do think there are some options here that, on the face of it, we should be able to eliminate and say, let's not dig into those. I don't know. And maybe everyone has different ones, but I think option two and option five are the ones that need to be looked at much more deeply. Option one just doesn't seem to make any sense, long-term or short-term, and I'd be happy to put a big X on that one. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
Could I just ask a question about option two? It says phased additions. Phased additions to what? Because it seems on the one hand to say you'll get an all-new school, but on the other hand, it says they're phased additions. So what that, what do you get?
That needs a better title.
I agree.
Because in phase, option two, that first project includes the $7 million for the architect to design the entire project all at once and to also design it so it can be phased in this manner.
Which is, which is a departure from how we've done the last four or five projects, right? Which have been PDEA projects.
Right. This, this would be a design, bid, build type project. And.
So, right. And, and, I'm sorry, just, just, you raised a good point. Where here does it bring in, so would we require a referendum to get the 10-odd million dollars for the design, build, hiring an architect? Is that built into this plan here?
Well, I think the, the first chunk of, the first budget would be the 43 million, and that includes the architect's fee for design.
Okay.
And, but he would be designing the brand new school probably out on the, behind Mary Ellen, like we were thinking to free up that whole commercial development at some point in time. So you would build the first piece of the school back there of the new school, and then for 2029, you're building the second piece of the new school with a third piece left to be built at some point in the future. So, yeah, it would be, I'm trying to think of a good way to say, it would be a phased new school instead of phased additions.
Would there, would, would it all be new when it's all said and done? Would there be anything left of the old structure?
Beyond, what you'd be working for would be beyond 2029, you would eventually build the last piece of the new high school and then demolish the half of the remaining existing school.
So, so it would ultimately be a, all new.
Right. That would be the end goal.
Right, okay.
Right.
Mr. Z, and then Mr. Redinger.
Thank you. I kind of agree with what Vice Mayor Conley said with regard to having a more meaningful discussion about which things that we perhaps favor less and which things we ought to concentrate on. At the very outset, I drew arrows from option five B to option two, so maybe option two ought to be kind of a slash, green and purple kind of color. Not that I like that combination, but before we take off any of the other options, let me just ask you here that with regard to option four, is this, is this a programmatic, half demolition, renovation estimate, or did you actually identify pieces of buildings that were worth saving that could be renovated?
I think the, the only idea where I actually looked at spaces was if we were going to build a new gym or a new auditorium and a new kitchen. So, because those pieces have a lot of specialty expensive parts to them, if, if the option was to, you know, keep the existing gyms and auditorium, then it would be a lot cheaper than if half of the addition.
So what would be the cost savings of keeping the existing gym and those other two pieces, other two functions? Is that, do you have that available?
Not, no, not offhand. You'd have to go into the detail.
Is it a significant number? Is it like, you know, 2.5 million dollars? Is it more like 10, 15, 20, something like that? Well, you know, you can answer that question later. I, I think that's a, a question that we need to answer before we can take off wholesale this very, what appears to be a very attractive compromise solution that gets us to most of the things that Mr. Redinger had said. And quite frankly, you know, it's a lot of attractiveness to having him think ahead of how to finance whatever it is that we're going to finance. And of course, at the end of all this, that's really the critical question. It goes back to what Ms. Oliver said about affordability. But the question of affordability also goes to, and we can't just leave that to some notional objective downstream that maybe we can sell the land, maybe we can lease the land, maybe we build the infrastructure and then zone it and then people take off pieces. You know, for example, if Dr. Schiller's assertion, as postulate may be a better word, that we can have a K through 22 experience in the city and bring in the power of UVA and Virginia Tech, I already know what that's going to do to my property value. I already know. I could sell my house for twice what it's worth today if that dream ever becomes realized. And I think that's working on. So we can't just, I don't think discard those kinds of things, say, well, we'll take care of those things downstream. I think that's got to be part of this discussion as well. So I know that Mr. Duncan has asked earlier, can we get some perspective on these things that we've talked about? And I keep on hearing it's the same two weeks deliverable that keeps on getting out, pushed out two weeks. So I, in the project management sense, I know what that means. It means you'll get to it one of these days, maybe. I would like to have a firm commitment on bringing back some of those things that we've been asking for. I think that lends context to our discussion. So return to this, I think that we need more information on option four. I guess a piece of three B as well. And then the, the other aspirational piece with regard to, was it K through 22, K through 24?
K through 6.
Some, some master's degree involved here where my kid could live my house and eat my, eat my food and all that kind of good stuff. You know, my kid could walk to university without having to have that, what's that, UVA experience, the, the green, the, the grass on the green experience, whatever that's called it? I don't know. The lawn? I think that's even, even better. Thank you.
Priceless experience. Mr. Redinger?
Well, first of all, I have to start off disagreeing with Mr. Z about one thing, and that's I really like green and purple together. They're two of my favorite colors. I've always been a fan of Barney, so I'm, I'm good with that particular approach. I'm trying to get down to the ground on what, what you've, I understand that there's part that's included in option two and part that's not. I gather that you're including in the cost estimate 6 million for HVAC, a million for the roof, and a million for miscellaneous improvements. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So those, those costs are, are borne on the phased solution like they would be on the option threes. And then the, the cost sheet that's separate shows the, the final phase being demo half the existing high school and the final high school addition. Can you, I, I know you did it in some detail the first time through, but can you walk through again what's included in these costs, what the phasing is, and this goes to what Mr. Castillo was asking before, what's left at the end for future build out that's not included in the phased costs?
Okay. So I call it project one for, that's complete in 2021. So that includes all the architect fees for the total design, includes $8 million to keep GM running for the, for a good length of time with a new roof, new HVAC equipment, and, you know, a million for the general repairs. And then it includes a 80,000 square foot new high school building that assume will be built out behind MEH. And this would be, and, you know, the piece that gets built, the, the architect will design the entire new high school so that it's designed to be phased and built in this manner, so once it's all complete, it all works as one school. So that would be project one. And I figured, looked at the population, that would take you to 2025 on that campus. So then the next project was 10 million to build the MEH expansion. So that was the MEH expansion. It included $2 million as an allowance to keep the existing high school operating. And I think that was that whole project. And so that would meet the needs of the campus till 2029. And then the project that's complete in 2029 for 58 million includes 120,000 square foot phase two of the new high school building. And it includes demolishing half of the existing high school, so you're, you're still keeping half the school running. And I think it was another $2 million to keep the school, existing school running. And I believe I had central office also in that, that cost to build the central office as part of the phase two high school building. So at the end of 2029, you still have 100,000 square feet of existing school left. So at some point in the future, you would have to build another 100,000 square foot, you know, the final phase of the new high school at some time in the future.
Right. And so just so it's clear, one, you've assumed 120,000 square foot addition and a, keeping half the existing footprint, which is what, around 100,000 square feet?
Correct. Correct.
That phase that could take place after 2025 could be for a full, I mean, you could change the $58 million figure and decide later to do a full teardown and a replacement instead of doing it in three phases if you had the money and the debt ceiling and you thought selling the land would be sufficiently useful. And if you did that, you'd free up to 10 acres.
Correct. Yeah. I think the reason that it's got the range of eight to 10 acres is when we decided to keep the 500 parking spaces on site and they were going to be surface parking, that chewed into our 10 acres. So with the, even the new construction, if there's a plan, you know, to get the parking moved off site, if between now and then, if something can be worked out to get those 500 spaces off the site, then you'll free up your 10 acres again.
Okay. So I'm going to then just take a moment to express my view since we're here and I'm talking, which is I'm at this point, it sounds like the stuff that I was most interested in is really option two. It's just a particular application of the factors. I would be, I think, quite ready to say, let's throw aside option one and all the threes and fours and get to option two and option five and do a more detailed exploration of those two alternatives, which I think are the ones that we really need to look at. But that's just my initial view. I'd be happy to talk about it.
Ms. Hardy?
I just had a clarifying question, option two. So for the, what remains in 2029, the $58 million leaves 100,000 of the old renovated school? Is that correct?
That leaves 100,000 square foot of the existing school, correct?
So it's not the same product and result as what you'd get from any of the option fives? Because those would be all new space?
Correct.
Or is 100,000 already renovated and it would be useful?
Yeah, I could take it out and, you know, do the final phase.
I think given that everyone's kind of narrowing down on this, I want to see whether at the end of these, you end up with comparable end products? Or do you have to spend more on the end of option two to get to a place where that remaining 100,000 has the same useful lifespan as a brand new school? Does that make sense?
Right.
So right now it does or it does not?
It does not. The 100,000 square foot that's left over is, you know, going to be 12 years older than it is now without any major renov, with a new roof and new HVAC equipment, and that's it.
Got it. Thank you. I was going to, when we were going back to the question maybe three or four people ago, we were talking about eliminating options. It sounds like everyone favors two and five. I think three B, when we've talked about it in the working group, just seemed like the no brainer to eliminate. It's on the surface. It costs as much as a brand new school and you don't have any room for economic development. Regardless of what you price out that land to be, it just doesn't seem to make sense. I think that seemed like an easy one to eliminate if we were talking about eliminating options.
Just a thought about economic development, or thought or two. One, the amount of economic development benefit we can get is directly related to what uses we want there. So for example, certain uses will throw off more money, but they may not be what we want as a community. So I think we need to really give some consideration to what kind of uses we model and what, you know, in terms of a lot of this or a little bit of this or, you know, how we do that. And I would just recommend that Mr. Shields, you throw in different mixes of uses because that'll definitely influence the return. I think also when it comes to economic development, Ms. Oliver mentioned risk, and I think there is risk. I think we can also mitigate risk, which I don't think we've really explored as aggressively as we have with creative ways to finance this. I think there are also creative ways to sell property, to have different uses or things that come online in different ways that could actually tie in very nicely with a very long-term debt that we have. Either defeesing part of your debt as money comes online, in other words, have like a partially defeasable bond. Anyway, I think there's a lot of things we can consider and should consider as far as economic development. To me, it's very exciting and really could be place making for the city that would have benefits beyond the four corners of 10 acres. And so I don't know how you monetize that or how you capture that, but I think there's a lot of value associated with development on this site that really, I think we're not really capturing here. And it may be because it's very difficult to model. But I think to the extent we're able to create some economic development, create a sense of place, there's some really exciting things we can do and I think exciting things that can happen on neighboring properties that really haven't been captured yet in our discussion. And I know it's very difficult to do that, but I think we should keep that in mind as we go forward. So anyway.
If I could actually jump back in, we, believe it or not, we didn't finish the entire presentation when we broke for questions, but wanted to let the discussion play out because I think it was really important to get this level of question, this level of feedback on the options. I promise I will return to an open forum if there's any more we want to eliminate or ask further questions on.
Just a couple more questions for Mr. Shields. You'd mentioned earlier money, debt coming off the books in 2022 and 2025. Just for the benefit of everyone watching and present, what are those amounts in 2022 and 2025?
It's approximately a $1 million reduction in annual debt service in 2022. And then an additional $2 million comes off of annual debt service reduction in 2026. So a total of a $3 million reduction out of those two big steps.
Which translates into how much borrowing capacity, muscle manuals?
About 30 million, 30 to 40 million.
And then one other question. Option five puts six to 10 acres online in 2021. Option two puts maybe four acres on in 2029. How do we value that gap, which I think is quite substantial, which I think also has a huge impact on the nominal costs, which are by no means worked through at this point? How do we capture that?
So I think, I think a few people here might answer differently, but for the purpose of this process, what I have up there is goals questions. We talked about them before. They were a part of our original, our original stakeholder audits. It's the questions that once we have the facts that we want to move forward, what do we actually want to do and what do we want to accomplish? And part of that was looking at the opportunity cost, which is something that we've been working on as we look ahead to forecast these questions that are coming. Not to say that the working group is by any means setting goals for this group, but to look at and say, what additional information do we need to stage a successful goals discussion? And that opportunity cost is, I think, what you're asking about when you look at the difference between option two, which would be possibly, you know, approximately four acres in 2029 versus the option fives that have, you know, the full six to 10 acre site available much sooner. I think it gets into some of that opportunity cost if we don't or if we don't do it aggressively.
Provide that level of modeling, what would it take to get an actual specific answer to these two questions? Which is, it depends on the type of economic development, how quickly we institute it, and the difference between doing it in '21 and '29. What's it take to get a factual answer to that for this body? It's an open question.
Yeah. And I think the point, the takeaway is these top, these top line numbers don't really tell you a whole lot right now. And there's some fairly significant bottom line impacting things that have yet to be addressed.
Great.
I got Snyder, he's been quiet tonight.
As uncharacteristic as that is, so I want to first thank everyone for a huge amount of work here. This is very helpful. And I, for one, would be reluctant to remove any of the options tonight, but I think this discussion has indicated certainly some of the questions and sort of a leaning, if you will, because this information really wasn't available to us until the meeting and the public hasn't seen it at all. So I think there's some, a decent time period there, somewhat short. It seems to me, listening to the discussion, we really have a couple lines that we're going to have to figure out how to sync together, and that's what this is all about. We have certain needs, repair needs and capacity increase needs. We have certain financing capability, which we can draw over time. And then we've got the commercial development issue, how much, when? And then we have yet a fourth component, which we need to grind in here, which is, can we bring in metro and can we bring in the grad center? And in what time period would that be possible? Finally, keep in mind that this does not occur in a vacuum. We have other CIP projects, which have been, some of which have already been approved by the voters and some are moving forward without that approval. And we have population-driven increases that are inevitable in the operating budget on both the city and the schools if we're to maintain high-quality schools and we're to have high-quality public safety services. So I'm sort of interested in, you know, how do we, how do we bring all these lines together? And to me, sort of, an option three looks like something to start with and/or even addressing what we need to now, building to meet the capacity as we need it, hopefully staying ahead of it. And I do appreciate what Ms. Ward said about nobody likes to live in a renovation, but perhaps there are ways to deal with that. And at the same time, how much land can we free up and how soon for commercial development? Because the problem that we've had with the proposals, in my view, that we've seen so far, is the lack of synchronization between the city taking on the obligation and the theoretical benefits from the commercial development. And that risk period could sink the city, which is something I don't think anybody wants to do. So this is a non-answer, but a suggestion as to how I would like to see us move forward. And this may end up being a fairly complicated plan with a lot of, we're going to do this now, you know, this, 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 and this, looking to hopefully meet the needs, stay a little bit ahead of the population. And at the same time, looking at how we can free up areas for commercial development, start to bring that online. And at the same time, bring in metro and bring in the grad center, which I think are essential to a truly great project at the end. So those are my thoughts right now.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm running on the mouth this morning or this evening, maybe this morning later. The, I don't disagree with what Mr. Snyder is saying. I'd say, and I, you know, I would very much, like, I'm on the school board. I'd love to put $110 million into building a new school right now if we had the money to do it and the city council was willing to afford that and the voters would approve it. And that would be great. I just don't know if there's enough appetite to get that done. So I'm thinking about what's the art of the possible. I think about option two, not as one project, but as two. It's really $53 million to get us through 2025 without a need to sell any land. So that keeps the current, the existing George Mason operate, operating, and it gets us, if I understand correctly, the square footage expansions we need to operate MEH and George Mason through that time period with a minimal commitment, with something we can sign on to without having to sell any land. The other thing I'm very interested in doing is, and this goes back to what you were saying, Mayor, I think we need to, if we're going to sell somewhere between four and 10 acres of very precious land within the city, it's really critical to me that it be for something that should be next to the school and our citizens want. And I'm worried if we try and do option five, this is my prejudice again, we're going to get fire sale prices. And we're going to need $30 million to shave off the debt to be able to get done. And what that's going to give us is a row of strip malls and apartments above it. And I think people are getting tired of that kind of development. So if we could get some development that people want that would give us the money that we need, I'd be very supportive of that. Short of that, what I'm most interested in is flexibility. And what I like about option two is it, it can be driven, it doesn't need to be 58 million in 2029. It could be far less than that if we sold a bunch of land and did full commercial development. Or it could be more than that if we didn't sell any land and we did a full-on replacement and got the entirely new high school with a big, you know, 10-acre city park if we wanted, to do with what we wanted. I just think we've reached a point, to get back to the point that Ms. Ward was making before, where we've got to fish or cut bait. We've got to proceed, you know, we need a new roof, we need new HVAC. And so I'm thinking, what options preserve, what options can the city afford and preserve our ability to get what we really run in the long run? And so I'm somewhat inclined to move as quickly as possible. I think option two can be steered to cover most of the things that we would want out of option three. In fact, I think if, you know, at the end of 2025, you decide you want to keep operating the old school forever and not even replace any of it, then you just renovate, you finish the renovation, you do the other things under option three. And you're in any of the option threes by getting there with option two, but without a financing requirement in advance that's quite so significant. So give me flexibility. I think we can get where we want to under either of these approaches. I think the big decision that we've got to make as a bodies or as a set of bodies is, do we want to do this in phases or do we want to do it all at once? I really think that's what it comes down to. And so I'm looking for sort of the cost comparisons that will help make that binary decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. Ms. Gill?
I'm a combination of Mr. Reddinger and Mr. Snyder. I like the flexibility of the phased approach because I'm concerned about the operating budget pressures with our growing enrollment and on the school side and in the general government side, just our growing city in general. Also, I'm looking at our elementaries and realizing those are quickly going to be at capacity as well and also need some financing in order to get those up to the right size. So a project that's phased, that allows us to do things, that gives us the flexibility to say, we haven't spent all of our money today and now, sorry, kids in elementary school, you're going to be in overcrowded, constrained spaces because we spent all of our money over here. Also, we can't hire any teachers, we can't hire police officers, we can't do anything else. We've already spent all of our money. I'd like to have more flexibility to deal with all of our needs as they're coming up.
Just for the record, I know, I know Ms. Gill is not suggesting that we're pitting our students against each other, but if you look at the heat maps, George Mason and MEH are the ones that are going to fill up first. Thomas Jefferson and Mount Daniel are farther down the line. I understand we have serious facilities needs. If you triage it, I think MEH and Mason are the ones that are going to be hitting first.
But they're not, they're not that much further, sorry, just to clarify, they're not that much further down the line. Also, again, if you spend $100 million today, you cannot, you cannot pay for that in four years. You can't pay to add on at TJ because Mount Daniel's at capacity almost immediately after we finished renovating it. You know, you can't do that. You've already spent all of your money. You know, so you can't, you can't plan this without looking further down the line. We can't, it's not pitting students against each other. It's realizing we're all part of one system.
But if you, I understand that, but you have to realize that the areas, we're just embarking on an expansion of Mount Daniel, and that's going to take us through, with any luck, 2021. George Mason is timing out at the end of 2018. Maryland Henderson, 2019, 2020. Thomas Jefferson, not until 2022, 23. That could be a substantial pressure relief for Mount Daniel. But I think we're kidding ourselves if we don't realize we have to address this. And I've said it before, we have three things we can choose from. We have low taxes, no development, or a new high school, and we get to choose a new or expanded or renovated high school. We get to choose two. We have to make a decision. I'm very worried that we're going to be continuing to engage in something that's not going to produce results in a timely fashion, and that's going to prejudice us substantially. So, you know, whatever we do, let's do something, but the navel gazing has got to stop. We have to engage people who do this for a living to give us concrete proposals that they will contractually agree to. Because right now, nobody in this room is stepping up to do any of these projects right now because this is a theoretical exercise designed to figure out what size breadbox we're looking at. But it is nothing more than that. And the other thing that I'm concerned about, there seems to be an unspoken assumption that we're not going to do a PPEA. That's going to bring with it substantial additional costs that we have not built in or considered in any real way, and I don't know how that's going to get factored into any bond offerings. So I think we need to get something that we can vet further. I think the financing piece remains the long pole in the tent. We don't have a substantial financing discussion about this because we don't have a proposal to sink our teeth into. And if we can get our former financial advisors involved in this, I think they could very much help us, but they've got to have something to work on. And I think as a final matter, I think we have to reconsider whether a joint PPEA is something we should bring back into the mix because without telling tales out of school, I think that is a competitive option that we should not discard at this point.
Other comments? I'm sorry.
No. What I want to try and do is get us some concrete act-
No. What I want to try and do is get us some concrete actions coming out of today. When we were at the very beginning of assembling questions, I think we came up with 27 or 29 as a group, and we spent an evening dividing them into kind of factor opinion, and we said, "Let's, let's tackle the fact-finding first," and that's what the working group has been doing. There's an element of this that we haven't gotten to yet, which is all of the opinion-based stuff. What are our goals? What are we trying to do, et cetera? And those need to be figured out. But before we get there, from a fact-finding standpoint, what I've heard tonight is the phased option needs a lot more consideration. People want to see some financial impact modeling, et cetera, understanding full well there's a limit to how much of that can be done internally. The working group should be charged with going back, seeing what can be done internally over the next two weeks on that, and bringing that level of information back to this board so that a concrete decision can be made on if outside support needs to be procured to go further with that data. Am I, am I recapping the factual piece of this next step appropriately for everybody? Great. So, that's what the working group's charge will be, is to go back and take a much stronger look at the phased option, to look at option five, taking nothing off the table at this point, take a harder look at these options with some of the financial impact modeling and others that we can do some limited work on internally to make sure that we've done as much of that as possible when it comes back to this group, with a legitimate question being added to that, what do we need to procure to do more? Does that make sense, Wyatt? Makes sense to everybody? So, that's the fact side of it. Bear with Tim for five minutes as we walk through the next couple of slides, because if you remember the 29 questions we came up with, your binder has answered almost all of them, but not all of them. So, what we need to do is figure out how, as a group, we're going to tackle the rest of these. Not tonight, but these are the questions that you all said needed to be answered before you got to a final solution.
Thank you. And it probably won't take five minutes, because a lot of these have already been kind of thrown around in this discussion, which I think is actually a positive sign showing us that we're exactly where we want to be. As a reminder of the roadmap and where this fits, once we have the status and needs, those factual questions that Michael mentioned, you know, at an agreeable point that we feel comfortable, at least comfortable enough to move forward and have discussion, we can move on to goals. And the goals, you'll notice, are in conjunction with some of those ongoing partnership discussions that I've heard mentioned again here. At what point do we decide to bring in Virginia Tech, Wamata, UVA, and some of those other potential partners? So, I will walk through these very quickly. We asked, "Could we accomplish our goals without giving up any land to develop?" I've heard that asked again, and some of this is can we, and some of it is could or should we. And I think that's an open debate, and I know that land is a precious commodity that it's almost impossible to get back. So, can we reach our goals and can we address our school issues without new construction? I think we've agreed that we can, so it becomes a question of should we. We still have to look further ahead at the political and referendum realities. I know there's a timeline across the top of the roadmap, and it's starting to feel stressful given where we are in 2017. We have to decide if that timeline is realistic. And as we look ahead, we have to determine how we will accommodate students and school needs during this time. To Ms. Ward's point, how do we accommodate students and how can we make sure the option we choose is really in the best interest across the board? That's going to be a little bit of an opinion debate. Do we need to renovate now to provide more time for visioning and a larger process in the future? I've heard a little bit of that tonight. Can we take a bite of what we can and push the rest of it to a later time where we can reevaluate where we are without having to base so much of our decision-making on conjecture or on our best guess? At what point will the school board and city council address the land ownership for the site? And what is the best location for the school and development on the site? I think a lot of these discussions are making assumptions about sites and certain locations, so we need to understand if that's really what we're looking at, or if we need additional evaluation there. How can ongoing partner discussions impact planning for the site? Again, partner discussions, something we already mentioned. And then, do we need everything to happen all at once, or should we proceed with phased, phased construction? Again, this is should we? And how will we continue to involve community members in this process moving forward, which, to the question of whether or not the PPEA process is reintroduced, I think gets into that level of discussion moving forward. Those were the goals. Wanted to bring them back up only as a reminder that all of these questions that are swirling around have been asked, and there's a place for them. And so, to Michael's point about reorienting this in the process, getting action items and moving forward, I hope there's some comfort level that these are not off the table, but they're still to come. For our next steps, and this is me, me wrapping up our portion, if you have additional feedback, again, after we leave pros or cons, funnel those through the working group and funnel them to us, so we can take them back and make any additional evaluations we need to. Like, we said already, the working group will update the options with supporting details. We talked a little bit about financial implications, the difference between price and cost when you look at the potential for economic development, as well as some line items that just may be helpful visually, like year at capacity. We talked about adding a line that says, "At what year will this option reach its capacity?" With this in mind, the goal of the working group, I think, is completing this binder so we can move forward, be content with everything in there, and have some discussions on the goals and how we move forward. Ironically, are there questions?
So, here I go again. I'm, I think, going to suggest a slightly different cast on something Mr. Castillo was talking about, which is, I think we've got a lot of information about what option five looks like. A lot of work went in the last process in determining what the school would look like. We did a lot of modeling. We know roughly what the pool construction costs would be. As Mr. Castillo points out, we have very little information about option two and phasing, and we're sort of doing that on a back-of-the-envelope, "What does Arcata say? You know, what do you guys think?" Throwing stuff into the pot. Does it make sense, not to say this is the route we're going to take, but to do something like an RFI or a PPEA for option two that essentially says, "Here's what our growth projections are for the middle school and the high school. You know, here is what we project our debt ceiling to be. Come back to us with plans that, one, meet both of those requirements, that is, our financial requirements and our capacity requirements. Do the revisions as rapidly as possible and free up the maximum amount of land for the city, both general government and schools, to use as they choose." My question I've got is, I don't know if, if that's too uncertain and, you know, developers want to bid on it or not, but you avoid the problems you get from a joint PPA of trying to get one person to do both things, and you get a chunk of information about the phased model to tell you whether or not the additional costs from phasing and delay in development are worth what the benefit is. And you have people who do this for a living, presumably providing you that work mostly for free. So, that's just a question I have as a step forward. And if that is something we ought to look at, is that something the working group should look at to try and come up with a set of constraints for an RFI or a PPEA?
I think just to, to add to that, all this costing is all basically just square-foot models. There's no design to take off, so it's square-foot models based on other high schools. And option two is the most complicated of the different options. And I think a, a middle point between what you were talking about and where we are now will be to have an architect do a feasibility study on that, where he, you know, actually maps out all the different spaces and, you know, just from a space-wise, how each phase would look and really try to nail down, you know, what, what it would look like and, you know, what spaces would be built at which times.
Vice Mayor Connolly, do you have something?
I have a question for Bob Jones, just about option two, where we're saying that the completion date is 2029. That doesn't mean the school's going to be under construction for 12 years, right?
No.
That means...
This is three separate projects, and that's when they complete.
Okay.
So, you figure each project is two years under construction, more or less.
Okay.
And so, it's six out of the 12 years.
So, there's not going to be a student who's in high school for four years, under construction for four years?
No.
It'll...
Mr. Jones?
So, my other question, and this is more of a next-step goals thing, I think we have to do a better job of sharing all this information with the public. We have these 10 options here in front of us, and we've all kind of said option one is a bad idea after we just talked about it for three hours. And there's 20 people here, and they heard us talk about it, and they may agree that option one is a bad idea, but there's a lot of other people that haven't had the benefit of that. So, I really think we need to come up with a way to say, "These are the pluses and minuses of each one, and this is why we say option one is not going to happen. We've discussed it, and here are the reasons why it's a non-starter. And here's the reasons why option two could go, could not go. There's some pluses and minuses there, but I think we really need to make that very public." And then, everything in this binder is also public information, and I think that needs to be put up on our websites so that people can see that and get to it whenever they want to. And I know it's a work in progress, so you don't want to put it up as it's going, but at the same time, everybody here wanted to see stuff, and they can't get to it. So, I think we really need to make an effort in the next seven days to get that up there.
Would it make sense to put together, and we can take the lead on this, kind of the one-page or the half-page narrative of how we got to this point, kind of reminding people of the process that's largely happened at the board and working group level? Or do you think it's enough just to put the raw information up at this point?
No, no, I don't, the raw information won't be helpful, because who in the world could look at this and understand it without a two-hour discussion? So, I think there needs to be some analysis and a explanation, a written explanation of each one that shows the pluses and minuses. And then, and then some of them may say, like, "We don't know what the pluses and minuses are yet, because we don't know what the economic development could be." So, that has to sort of be an open question.
Right.
I have a question, and this is a little, I'm digressing a little bit, but Wyatt, what, what type of economic development do you foresee if we go that route up at the high school? Are you looking at more commercial or possibly bringing in some small businesses, like maybe small, I don't know, tech companies? Do you have any idea what you, what the planning commission and city's thinking in that respect?
Jim Snyder just walked in the room. One thing that I think would be useful for the group...
He's leaving now. He's just walking out of the room.
Is, we have, as everyone does know, we've received two grants to help us with the planning for the site. And we want to use those grants to conduct a small area plan for the campus site. And so, that process is underway right now. We have a couple of dates we'd like the group to be aware of, and just a kind of a quick briefing as to what we're trying to accomplish with that small-area-plan effort. And it does get to those types of questions. But maybe, Jim, could you just give a fairly quick overview of what that looks like?
Well, we are, we are looking to...
Microphone.
Can you hear?
Yeah.
We are looking to try to have a kickoff meeting on January 28th to begin planning commission, small-area-planning process, with the idea of doing something within several months so that we'd be prepared for a question for the voters, referendum in November. So, this will be on a compressed timeframe. In terms of, your question, I believe, was, "What kind of development would you anticipate?" Well, I think it, it needs to be of sufficient size to be of interest to major development groups and to get the value that you would need. So, I would think it would be at least a two-and-a-half area, floor area ratio for the site probably should be higher, given that you're near Metro. So, it's going to be, need to be of some consequence and size. So, it depends on how much acreage you have available, and I would imagine it would be mixed-use development with combination of retail, hotel, office, and some residential. That kind of mixture tends to be the most successful long-term in the marketplace and the most, and of the most interest to the development community, and it's, it's what's most successful in the region. So, it will take rezoning and replanning. The, the amount of density near Metro Station needs to be significant, or it won't function correctly. So, you, it's an area where I think density can be handled. So, it, a lot of it will depend on how much the city wants to do. But you certainly can make the rules, make the zoning, make the planning, so it's really in the city's hands, for what they choose to do.
Clarify. I've, of course, I'm not the expert, you are, but I've been of the understanding that mixed-use development is no longer a profitable way to go, that, that other communities are actually looking at actually bringing in small startup companies, particularly technology companies. And that's what I've been hearing. And if you could just clarify that or dispel any rumors that I've been hearing, I appreciate it.
I think the most successful developments in the region have been those that are transit-oriented, and that's a national trend as well. So, we're near Transit Station. It's an underused station presently because of changes that, where the Silver Line came in, and it took development activity and off of that station. So, I think, first of all, you have a location that should be successful because it's near transit. It's also near some major highways and roadways, which also are helpful. Mixed-use development, I think, is still the preferred kind of development that will be successful. Not having one development that's only one thing, that tends to be not as successful. Having a mixture of uses is more successful. That's what I'm hearing, seeing in the marketplace and in the literature. Certainly, those are things that will be looked at, and there may be examples of areas in the region where comparable-sized sites are being developed or being considered for development. So, I think that's part of the effort, smaller planning will be looking at, what are some areas of similar size or approximate size where development programs have been put together that have been successful, or both in terms of economics and in terms of how, whether, designed, how they fit into the community and where it's still located?
Just a quick question for Dr. Schiller. One of the things that I have been amazed by is the alchemy of the TJ High School renovation. I asked Dr. Schiller to reach out and see if we could get a tour of that site, to figure out how they've managed to add so much space for a relatively modest apparent cost. Dr. Schiller, do you have any update on where we are on that?
Yes, we're working on that, and it could be as soon as next week that the visit can be arranged. We, I'll know more tomorrow about that. And so, I think that as soon as I have a confirmation, I will send that out to everyone who might want to be able to join us.
Great. I think that'll be a useful visit. Thank you.
One other thing, if I could just point out, oh, there's hands up.
The reason I didn't raise my hand should be obvious. They're not quite in the line of sight. I just wanted to have the staff and working group provide as much information as they could on the question that we talked about earlier in terms of student disruption as a result of construction, and also, you know, the sort of civic energy that we spend in meetings like this discussing things. So, for the plan that would have us involved in some kind of construction, either actually doing it or planning for the next phase of it for 12 years, what would that really mean on the ground in terms of impact on students and, you know, scheduling of these two bodies to engage in a continuing dialogue on construction of school facilities for 12 years? I mean, I think, I'm not sure that we're well set up to do that. We've, we've had trouble in this round, and the prospect of doing it for another 12 years is just something that I'd like a little more thought and information on. And then, by comparison, the, what are we really getting with the new school option? You know, at the end of four years, building it, how long does it last? I mean, is it, is it good for, you know, 10 years, 15 years? Again, to try to get at the question of the disruption on the campus itself, and also just the involvement in the process that's required of the council and the school board, which takes time away from other things that we might want to do.
So, I just wanted to remind our entourage team here that what I heard earlier was a request for some architecture engineering planning support. So, you know, it costs a little bit of money to, to give us some help on essentially putting together colored Lego blocks, attaching some cost to these things on the phased approach. I think that would be money well spent, and I think the working group ought to take that on as an assignment.
Sorry, can we just go back to the timeline, the original, the one that shows that we're in December, projects in January? I think also it would be helpful for the working group to take a look at where we are right now and what the critical points are for making decisions if we are going to hold the November 2017... to hold the November 2017 referendum, or whether we believe that's no longer feasible. I think we need to put up a new timeline that shows that, yes, we're aiming at November 2017, and we need to make a decision in two weeks, or we can't make a decision in two weeks, so let's just be realistic about when we're going to do the referendum and push all the dates out accordingly.
Okay. Any other comment?
Just a response. My key concern to that is with the upcoming elections and the number of members who are up for election that will be starting at square one on, if we deal with this on December 1st, and that may just be what we have to do. I don't know. The other thing that I would throw out here that I don't, I think there's, you may have noticed that I'm a bit frustrated about this, and I am, but one of the things that I think is some low-hanging fruit that none of us have really paid attention to is the fact that it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of head-scratching about the MEH expansion, and should we find a way to proceed with that while we're sorting out what to do with George Mason? Because I think it may be possible to get that piece of the puzzle going sooner rather than later. I understand where the expansion would go, may be variable and might depend on some of the George Mason, but there are some scenarios, I think, where you could do it irrespective of what happens with George Mason, and I think we should really try to be aggressive about that, and if we can make MEH happen sooner, by all means, let's do so.
So, this is what I have for the working group's four action items. I just want to make sure I have them all. Adopting a new look at the timeline with critical points, looking at the phasing info and the fiscal impact modeling that's possible in-house, looking at options for extra support that may be needed, posting the information with additional context and a narrative about how we got here and what the options mean. Those are the four things I've written down. Are we missing anything for what the working group needs to do to bring back to this body? And in terms of enrollment projections with Weldon Cooper numbers coming, and in terms of what we can afford as a district, which Wyatt produced a couple of meetings ago, any other information that people are missing in either of those sections of their binder? Are we good?
Just have one quick addition that was, came up a second ago. If we can reach out to, and I guess the most recent one closest to us is George Marshall, what their process was of the renovating while they were doing it and placing their kids where they're throughout their renovation, what they did to try to accommodate their students to not necessarily make it as unbearable as a renovation could potentially be, how they tried to smooth that out for them, I think would be some good information to at least get an idea from a school that did a renovation while their students were there. And I believe Yorktown may have done the same thing over in Arlington while their kids were there, just to kind of get that, that information added to the, to them.
Perfect. Thank you.
You mentioned a six-week wait for the Weldon Cooper numbers. How significant is that to any decision-making that's coming up?
And I think that came from the level of detail that was being requested. It just took time to do that study, is my understanding.
Yeah, I believe that's right. It was updated numbers on how Weldon Cooper was factoring in the housing developments, but I believe that request went in through Dr. Jones in early December, so the six weeks there may, we may already be partway through that. So, it may be closer to, you know, two or three more weeks. I just, I believe the school system has the connection there, they could give us an update, but we can, we can circulate a note once we know.
I think one thing else, one other bit of information I think would be relevant. I think our internal fiscal model will, I think, accurately capture, fairly accurately capture the tax revenue that's generated through different uses. I'm not sure internally we have the capacity to evaluate what the market rate is on a per-square-foot basis of different uses, and also what mix of uses is actually feasible. In other words, what would the marketplace accept and absorb? And so, I think probably the working group might want to give some consideration as to what our limitations are as to economic analysis and what areas we may want to consider getting some help from a consultant. That's somewhat related to what we've talked about earlier, but it wasn't on your list of items just now.
We're doing it both on the architecture and planning side and on the financial modeling tax side.
Well, not, I think the tax side is probably well-handled internally. I think it's really just on what, on a per-square-foot basis, a particular use would generate as far as a sale, what kind of mix of uses would actually be absorbed by the market. I think those things are probably not going to be able to be handled internally, but maybe the working group could spend a little time thinking about how we might use a consultant in that area as well.
Great.
Just to add to that point, you know, we did do a reality check with our RFPs, so that information ought to be a pretty good indication, at least today, what the market thinks is developable and what the value would be, and over what period of time we would receive that value.
Just one other question that was perhaps less material when we first came up with the list of questions, and that is, without trying to sound too judgmental, is the new construction option really on the table for the amount we've got it listed? And what I mean by that is, at a recent school board meeting, we had the facilities team tell us that, you know, we are in desperate need of new HVAC and a roof, something that will come as surprise to no one. The phased construction includes $8 million, six of which is for HVAC, one million of which is for the roof. I don't think those costs are included in the new building, but it's not at all clear to me that the current HVAC system or the roof will last until a 2021 construction can be done. So, there may be, and I can't tell you it's $7 million, I can't tell you it's $3 million, but there may be a significant maintenance cost if we go the new school route option to keep GM operating until an entire new build could take place. And that could add, in fact, I'm relatively sure would add millions of dollars, whether it's $1 million or $7 million, I don't know, to any of the new school projects, unless those costs have been built in to the new school construction fees.
Mr. Z.
Well, just to Mr. Revenue's point, you know, that it's not really necessary to tear off the old roof and put a new roof on. There are ways of getting around that. You could, for example, put up a tussle structure over the existing building from parapet to parapet, costs a lot less temporarily. You could rent it. If HVAC fails or starts to fail, you could have skid-mounted units, you just pump air into the, into the building and out. It'll look ugly, but it'll work. So, the traditional approach here is to go and rip it out and put in something. It'll cost $10 million guaranteed. You rent a skid-mounted unit, draw the cost down to 20% of that. Again, we live with that, and, you know, it might come to pass this summer, and we have to make that decision, but I think I could stand a little bit of ugliness and having to spend $25 million.
I don't dispute that at all, Dan. I just say, I'd like to know what those costs are and what they're likely to be as a part of the new school option. And interestingly, there already are two roofs on George Mason. We'd be adding a third, which is fine, but--
The third wouldn't be in the air.
Dr. Schiller, any update on whether there are any safety issues with respect to the roof?
Well, I'll have a report tomorrow. Yes, we'll have-- Report, a report tomorrow that I had requested, and Mr. Pideo tells me that we would have that kind of information. I'll be able to get it out to you.
Great. And then, with respect to to-dos, if we could get something with respect to the estimated budget to align things so that they have more apples-to-apples comparisons, for example, with respect to what comes up for development when and in what quantity? And to Mr. Reitinger's point of risk of system failure, we may have to just come up with a probability cost analysis and say, you know, there's a 30% chance within three years of a $5 million event, and cost it that way. But I agree with Mr. Reitinger that that has to be baked into the numbers.
Anything else, or should we wrap up this evening? Or, anything else? Okay, well, listen--
Just one thing, real briefly. The question was raised about re-engaging with UVA Tech and Wamata Fairfax County. The planning effort is a great vehicle to do that, and so, we'll be working with communications to those partners to let them know about that planning effort and to solicit their involvement in it.
Okay. Unless there's anything else. Okay.
The working group itself doesn't have a scheduled meeting, but we have lots of assignments. Should we plan to schedule a meeting after this meeting, a time of work?
Anything else? Thank you all, and thank the working group particularly for the great work. Thank you all as well. I think we're making some progress.